It's always man.
Good afternoon. I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:34 PM. Board members present are Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mrs. Marisol Kiana, and myself, Nelda Sullivan. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Fernandez, and the pledge will be given by Mrs. Morgan. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear only Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come together as a team of eight and to guide and direct our district into great and wonderful things and the things that are happening in the district. I pray that you watch over us, that you give us guidance, that you give us the leadership, the knowledge, the wisdom to get us through this board meeting and throughout the rest of this week, this month, and this year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I think it's me.
Okay.
I think it's me.
I think we have policy.
We do. The Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees Personnel Committee will meet in room L-101, and the Policy Committee will meet in the boardroom. Who's on policy now?
I know I was on both at one time.
Policy is Marisol Kiana, Marshall Kendrick, and Kenny Fernandez. And Personnel Committee is Vicky, Marisol, and Fred Roberts.
So we've got Marisol on both.
On both of them, yes.
Well, it's good because I'd like to be there when you discuss personnel.
We'll just do Personnel.
I think this will be quick.
This should be pretty quick.
This should be quick.
Okay. With as much material as you send us, and it's going to be quick.
The vast majority of the material I send you ends up being legal policy, which we don't have any local control over, so that's more for notification purposes. And then actually, this policy update, a vast majority of the updates to local policy are based on the Every Student Succeeds Act and its effectiveness and repeal of the No Child Left Behind Act. And so just changing references and things like, you know, highly qualified and then language that was specific to the No Child Left Behind Act and removing that. That's predominantly what Update 105 is. And then Update 106 was only two policies, legal and local, and that was the cameras in the classroom policy that we need to implement pursuant to the Commissioner's rules regarding cameras in the classroom. And then the interim update, 2007.01, there was a policy CPC local in 105 in which TASB standard, their, you know, baseline person that they put in everyone's policy to be the records management officer is the superintendent, because 90 percent of districts in Texas aren't big enough to have someone else designated. Pasadena has designated the Associate Superintendents for Accountability and Compliance. And so that's all update, the interim local policy 2007.01 is doing is correcting that title to make it easy, you know, to make your motions easier so that that's clear, that we're making edits beyond Update 105 to that one specific policy. Do any of you have any specific questions about any of the local changes that were included in Update 105, 106, or 2017.01?
Yeah, that was actually one of my questions is, does that really affect us and what we do and how we do it?
You mean the...
The Associate Superintendent?
It doesn't affect us at all. I mean, we have a, we have, you have to file a designation of a records management officer with the state. And when Barbara took that position back in the 90s or the early 2000s, she said, she filed her paperwork then, and that's who we designate. It's just most districts designate the superintendent and don't have, you know, a secondary person to designate.
She is excellent at it.
Yes, and we just, we just wanted to make sure that our local policy is reflective of our actual practice.
It is.
But beyond that, is anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
No, I appreciate your work on it, though, Judy.
All right, no problem.
Thank you very much. The board will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071 to consult with the district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, and when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. Section 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Yep. I know, it's, do we start it? Oh, it is. Oh, you just called somebody. It's nice to have such a good crowd. There are some extra seats around, so if you'd like, try to find a place so that you will be comfortable, so that you can enjoy this meeting. I now call reconvene into open session.
Ready to start with special recognition?
Dr. Powell will lead us with our special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and audience. We are going to be honoring eight of our high school students tonight and their teachers for competing with students across the state of Texas to become a member of the prestigious 2016-2017 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band and All-State Choir. And my good friend Linda Fletcher, who is our wonderful Director of Fine Arts, said if Dr. Powell would like to say a few words about fine arts, she may do so. And she even typed me up some nice words to say.
I tried.
So I will just do as I'm told and read these nice words.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Oh, wow.
Just for you, Linda.
I should have put in there some budget stuff in.
Oh, boy. Arts education is not a frill. It's beneficial to every student, and I do truly believe that. The arts help our students reach across a broad spectrum of learning styles and raise achievement in at-risk students, young children, underserved populations, and students with disabilities. Students in a high-quality school music program score higher on standardized tests compared to students in schools with deficient music education programs regardless of their socioeconomic background. Music builds critical thinking skills. It prepares students for rigors of higher education, invigorates the process of learning, and pushes the mind to an advanced level of competence. I can honestly say we have amazing fine arts students in Pasadena ISD, amazing programs, and amazing fine arts teachers. So we are doing well in the area of fine arts. Thank you, Linda. I'll turn it over to you, and you can do the fun part of introducing our amazing students.
I want to thank our Superintendent, Dr. Powell, and the board members for allowing me this opportunity to present and recognize these outstanding students and their families and their directors and their support staff, their administrators. Without any of those, none of this would have happened. So I want to thank you, and I thank you for letting me do this this evening. But before we do, we received again, for the 10th year in a row, one of the best communities for music education in 2015 and 16, and hopefully, I have my fingers crossed, we'll hear about it sometime in March, hopefully for 16, 17. But this is the 10th year for commitment to music education with this honor. And Best Communities for Music Education affirms that our district has demonstrated exceptional efforts toward maintaining music education as part of our curriculum, our core curriculum. And our music educators go above and beyond their required duties to make sure their students are successful and their students succeed. This recognition is direct reflection of their commitment. It is evident that our community, our administration, our school board support and encourage quality music education for every one of our students, and we are blessed to have that in our community. Students in Pasadena are exposed to high-quality music programs from kindergarten through their senior year. And the Best Communities for Music Education surveys the district to answer detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program and community music-making programs. Responses were verified with school officials and reviewed by the Institute for Educational Research and Public Service of Lawrence, Kansas, an affiliate of the University of Kansas. So that's how we get to, for the 10th year in a row, one of the best communities for music education. And as Dr. Powell said, why study fine arts in school? As our board members know, and our Superintendent and everyone in our district knows, that TMEA and the Texas Coalition for Quality Arts Education released their findings of a study revealing that Texas schools with higher levels of student participation in fine arts receive higher academic ratings, and many of our students are in the top 10% of their classes. They have better attendance rates and lower dropout rates. And you can find the full report on tmea.org. One more thing before I introduce these wonderful students. They compare every year at TMEA the SAT scores, and as you can see, the 20, this was from 2015 because not all the 2016 SAT scores are in yet. So 2015 SAT average was 1410. The national SAT average was 1490, and the All-State Composite Score of 11 of our All-State Groups for 2015 was 1844. So the Texas All-State Composite Score of 1844 is 354 points above the national average and 434 points above the Texas average. So our All-State students are not only wonderful musical students, but they're also academic achievers. And before a student can be selected to the All-State Group, they must compete many levels. They have to compete at the district level, and most of this starts, especially with choir, starts in what, August? Usually in August, even before that sometimes. So they have, they are working for many, many months for their music. They go through district, region, and area levels. And there are over 65,000 students who auditioned in Texas and went through this process, and the students we recognize tonight represent the top 1% of the state's students, high school musicians that made it. At the convention, some auditions, some had to audition some more for places in different organizations. So they, then they plunged into rehearsals for those few days they were there and had the most glorious musical performances. And I think it's something they'll remember their entire lives. I know I did, and I still do. The students we recognize tonight have achieved the highest rank they can attain at the high school level for a musician. I would like to present tonight the following Pasadena ISD All-State students, and I would like to recognize their parents, families, directors, and administration. Our first student is Sean Seprestine from Dobie High School. Sean is a senior. Sean is a senior at Dobie High School, has been a member of the choir for four years, varsity choir for three years, region choir member for four, JFD singers for two, and theater productions for two years. We have received many acting awards for his performance in each UIL one-act play. Sean was just accepted to A&amp;M Corpus Christi in the fall to pursue a degree in musical theater. I would like to ask the following people to stand and be recognized, Sean's family and friends that came. Ms. Wendy Charlotte is one of his directors. She had a death in her family, and she was flying out, so she could not be here. But I know his principal, Mr. Franklin Moses, and Assistant Principal Donna Branch are here, and they're standing. Donna's here and standing. Our next All-Stater is TJ Williams from Memorial High School Band. TJ has completed a feat that is, not very many people get to do. He is a three-year All-Stater, and he is from Pasadena Memorial High School, who grew up surrounded by music, which led him to decide to pursue his bachelor's degree, yay, in music education, and trumpet performance at Sam Houston State University. My own. He also wants to follow by his master's and doctorate programs in conducting, so you can come back anytime you want, TJ, okay? He is very passionate about all things scholastic, as he has managed, maintained in the top 1.2% of the class of 2017, while he has found himself to involve in other extracurricular activities, including singing baritone in the Maverick Chamber Choir, marching cymbals in the Pasadena Memorial, indoor drum line, continuing his two-year membership with the Houston Youth Symphony, and earning a contracted spot in the Santa Clara Vanguard Drum Line and Bugle Corps for the summer of this year. Way to go, TJ. I would like to ask the following people to stand and be recognized, TJ's families and friends, here, there's, there's Dave. Mr. Jason Harvey is his band director, and he's in the back, along with his principal, Mr. Jeremy Richardson, and Assistant Principal, Ms. Jessica Swinson are both here. They're in the backstand. You can wave. Our next All-Stater is Matthew Lenaris from South Houston High School. Matthew is a tenor II. He's a junior at South Houston High School Varsity Choir. He serves as the tenor section leader, has received a one at the state solo and ensemble competitions, performing to schools musicals since his freshman year. He also participates in NHS and the PISD robotics team. Way to go, Matthew. And I would like to ask the following people to stand, if they're here, any Matthew, Matthew's family or friends here? His family are separated. Mom and dad. And did Brenda make it, Ms. Varvoudis? She was trying to get back here in time. Okay. Her husband's here. Mr. Fernandez here. That's, that's her assistant, second assistant, because he's with him all the time. His assistant principal, Ms. Paula Ballou, I think is here. I just saw her. Thank you, Ms. Paula Ballou. Also from South Houston High School, we have Mariah Martinez. She is a senior at South Houston High School, where she is soprano section leader, plays cello in the varsity orchestra, part of the key club, and a full-time choir geek, as she puts it. Mariah is so grateful to sing with the All-State Mix Choir for the first time and hopes to become a professional musician and music producer. I would like to ask any of Mariah's family and friends to please stand and be recognized. And also it's Ms. Brenda Varvoudis and Ms. Paula Ballou are both here. You can stand again. Yes, I know. I'll introduce the principals from Sam Rayburn in a bit, because there's four students from Sam Rayburn that made it all. So we have Charles Dial from Sam Rayburn High School Band. Charles is a sophomore at Sam Rayburn High School, is a two-year member of the Sam Rayburn Marching Band, Wind Ensemble, and Symphony Orchestra, and also ranked eighth in the class of 2014. Charles, a first-year All-State member, has earned district band honors for two years, with this also being his first year to earn, to earn region 19 band and orchestra as well as area honors. Charles also hopes to attend Rice University to pursue a degree in physics. I would like to ask any of Charles's family or friends if they're here so we can recognize And I'll get to his directors because there's one more band director, one more band student. George Alcochere, Sam Rayburn High School Band. Charles is a senior. He's attending Sam Rayburn High School, is the Colonel of the Sam Rayburn Mighty and Texan Marching Band. He's a second-year All-State Band Member, has earned region and area honors for four years while also participating for the first time in the region 19 orchestra this year. And he is also a member of various academic extracurricular programs such as the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Envirothon? Envirothon? What is that? I don't know. Someone needs to explain that to me. And Business Professionals of America, the Rho Kappa National, Nu Alpha Theta, Math Honor Society, College Club, and Math UIL, and plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin to obtain a bachelor's degree in engineering and to further pursue a master's degree in engineering at Rice University. Way to go. Could George's family and friends please stand? The two, the directors of these young men are, the band directors, Mr. Jeff Embry. Wave, please, Jeff. And I'll get the principals in a minute. I don't want them to have to worry about four times. The next person is Mr. David Gonzalez. He's Sam Rayburn High School Choir. David is a senior at Sam Rayburn High School, who is a member of the varsity choir, encore show choir, the musical, and color guard. He plans to move to New York City in the fall to pursue music and to one day perform at the Met. I have, you can do it, because I have one of my students who has performed at the Met when I was teaching at Pasadena High School. So that is, you can accomplish it. I would like to ask the following people stand and be recognized, David's family and friends, if we are here? Yes, thank you. His direct, I'll get to the directors in a minute, because I have one more from Sam Rayburn. And it's been an honor to introduce this lady for four years in a row, Ms. Najali Santos, Sam Rayburn High School Choir. It's amazing to make it one year, much less two, three, and especially four, because she had to have made it her freshman year, and that doesn't happen very often. Najali is a senior. She gonna make me cry, because she has a beautiful voice. Najali is a senior at Sam Rayburn High School and an active member of the Varsity Corral, Encore Show Choir, and the Houston Grand Opera High School Vocal Studio. Now, after completing her fourth year of All-State Choir, she plans to attend college and earn her bachelor's degree in vocal performance and pursue a career in opera. I would like to ask the following people to stand, if any family and friends of Najali The choir directors for these two wonderful people are Ms. Angela Gann, oh, she's at a class, I forgot, and Mr. Kyle Evler and Mr. Peter Farley are the also choir directors. And the administration that's always here and very supportive of all of their activities on campus. For Rayburn, Mr. Robert Stock, principal. Mr. Chad Cox, assistant principal. Districts like Pasadena that incorporate music, art, drama, and dance into their basic curriculum have found that teaching the arts has a significant effect on the overall success of the school. The arts prepare our students for the 21st century workforce, such as being an effective communicator, a proficient problem solver, self-directed worker and thinker, a cooperative team member, which we all love, and a responsible citizen. As Daniel Pink's bestselling book says, he was an economic and business author, says "We must prepare kids for the future, not our past." I think these directors have done a great job of preparing our kids for the future. I would like to again acknowledge and recognize these young men and women, their musical talents along with their teachers and administration. Thank you for all your hard work.
Linda, Brenda got here from South Houston. She snuck in.
She had a class. So Brenda's here from South Houston High School, the choir director. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would go out that door.
Congratulations again to each of you.
Yes.
Is the Coman group? Yes. Our next special recognition tonight is dealing with our Coman Houston presentation for being the number-one Houston fundraiser in 2016. So I'm going to ask Diane Wheeler, who is the principal for Malillo Middle School, but she's also tied with our team captains for PISD Comans, if she'll come forward and share with us who all's here with her tonight and the outstanding information that we know is about to be heard.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Powell. As a united front, our Pasadena team has raised $1,321,544 in the last 12 years by creating and selling T-shirts related to Coman, honoring the district's 172 breast cancer survivors and those who have succumbed to the disease. We've also participated, by board approval and, Dr. Powell, Passionately Pink Thursdays and having campus fundraisers. I'd like to introduce Amber Morris and Marcia Jones, if they would stand. Okay. They are co-captains, and I really want to appreciate, express my appreciation to them as well, but also to our superintendent, board members, administration, employees, and campus and department representatives, team captains, and our PISD Coman team for their continued support, dedication, and passion for this worthy cause. We would also like to say a special thanks to Rhonda Kirchman, if you would stand. She's here tonight representing the Gulf Coast Credit Union. Rhonda has been very instrumental in keeping the strong community relationship between the credit union and PISD for such a good cause as Coman. And tonight, we have two special representatives from Coman. One is Debbie Scanlon. She is the Coman Board Chair. And we also have Emelda Douglas, Coman Executive Director, and they would like to say a word of thanks also. Thank you very much.
Hard to follow those incredible students that were just up here a minute ago, I tell you.
I tell you. To the superintendent and to the board, President Sullivan, and to the other distinguished members of the Board of Trustees, I am Emelda Douglas, the Executive Director for Susan G. Coleman-Houston, and with me tonight is my board chair, Debbie Scanlon. And we want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to present this award. First, I just want, they already did it, but we just can't say enough about Pasadena Independent School District, and you're just known across the country within the Coleman family for the outstanding work. There's not a better school district who does more for this organization than you do right here in Pasadena, and so we are just so proud of you. I want to thank, again, Rhonda from the Credit Union, and Amber, and Diane, and Marcia. These ladies work tirelessly to make this happen each and every year. And also, I want to just go ahead and give an acknowledgement to the originator, Dr. Karen Holt, who couldn't be here tonight, but it was her vision and support that really made this all happen for our organization through your hard work. Susan G. Coleman would not be able to make the positive impact that we have on the community without partners like you. We exist to provide breast health services to women in need and also to provide funding for critical research, because it's our intention that we will lead the cure for breast cancer within this generation. And so it's with partnerships like you that make that all happen. Once again, Pasadena ISD is the only school district in the city of Houston that comes together in this way. Each of you, the employees, parents, students, and members of the community, all working together on one united team to present the largest fundraiser in the city of Houston, and we appreciate that. For the last six years, Pasadena ISD Coleman Team has been with us and, in the last six years, has been the number-one fundraising team in the city of Houston. And in the last nine years, has been the number-three team in the city of Houston.[740.13][740.13](Applause).
I just want to take a moment, make it pretty quick, but on behalf of the Board of Directors for Susan G. Coleman, I want to thank the Pasadena ISD for what you have done. And, you know, our mission is to save lives, and having you out and hitting the pavement and bringing the money over to help us do that has been quite incredible, and we do use your story. She's very true, and across this nation, everybody knows Pasadena ISD and want to know what we've done to make this happen. We're like, they're just very motivated in Pasadena. So it's tonight that we're honored to give you this award for the 2016 highest total team contributions in Houston Coleman for $78,314.59. What a great cause. Thank y'all very much for coming.[898.57][898.57](Applause).
You know, student achievement is one of the highlights of our district, and the superintendent gets so excited about this, and also the Coleman Group. It's a great organization, and it's benefited so many women in our area, that she let us get ahead one spot on the agenda.
Uh-oh.
So we need to move back to item number three, which is a public hearing of the annual performance report.
Oh, academic achievement.[939.32][939.32](Laughter).
Including the 2015-16 Texas Academic Performance Report, which will be given to us by Ms. Donna Summers.
Good evening, board, and employees, and lots of guests. I have nothing as exciting as anything else that will happen tonight. So I'll just lead with, I am a Pasadena ISD Fine Arts product, and Linda did not pay me to say that. As a result, I wasn't as good as these kids, but I received a scholarship just for participation every semester in college and got to go to Tokyo and got to go to Paris as a result. So there's a lot of great things that happen once you leave here and move into a new world. So I just wanted to share that, because I have nothing else really exciting to talk about.[983.88][983.88](Laughter). So we're here today to fulfill a requirement for the Texas Education Code. This is a public hearing related to reports for data from last year, the 2015-16 school year, and even some of the data that dates back to 1314. We are not going to rehash everything today. The whole purpose is to talk about what's available where and when. The reason we're doing it now is because TEA posted the last of what was required in November. We spent December getting those on campus and districts' websites. We spent January making sure we had all the rest of the pieces together with the presentation to follow today. So we will start with the biggest piece that was just posted in November, which is the most recent that we have from the state, just noting that we are an accredited district who met standard and has a superior school financial first rating. We currently have almost 56,000 kiddos, including 3,200 graduates and almost 8,000 employees. The report that was posted in November has four major parts. The STAR performance, which is our state assessment, attendance and post-secondary readiness, which includes college and career, student and staff information, like the details I just shared with you, and then links to the 1415 financial reports that Mr. Pesachek has shared with you multiple times. Some of the information you can get inside of those reports are like this, where we see district comparisons on the far left to Region Four, which is the Houston-area Harris County in the middle, and the State on the right. We are continuing our focus on reading and literacy, which is the first group that you'll see, where the district is a little further below the others, but in all other areas, we're very close to either the district or the Harris County or the State. When you look at that report, there are some things to remember. We do not have comparable data for STAR, which is our state assessment, because last year, math grades 3-38 was not included. They hadn't had passing rates or decisions when this report was produced. And then also, our alternative assessment for special ed students were new last year or being rewritten, and I don't anticipate that this year will be comparable to next year, because they've already made changes for this year. When we talk about ELLs, another special item in the report, that's our English language learners, but includes students who are not only currently determined as English language learners, but anyone who's exited in the past two years. So that's an important item to remember when you go through the report. If you want to see items very specific to our current English language learners, those are on pages seven and eight of the full report. Just to note, our district was, our passing percentages were at or above the state in grade three reading and math, grade four reading, math, and writing, grade six math, and grade eight math, science, and social studies. So those are definitely some celebrations for us. Other information you can find in this report is broken down by student groups, so our race and ethnicities. There are seven, primarily four in our district, African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian. Those are the first four columns you see, and again, this is by subject. So the first set is reading, the next set is math, followed by writing, science, and social studies. And again, this is just to give you an idea of what's there, not to just repost everything that we've talked about all year. The darkest blue line you'll see, which is about the fifth column on any given set, is economically disadvantaged. We are at 76.4% economically disadvantaged in our district. And then the last column you see, the green one, is our English language learners, and in this case, does include current, as well as those who have been here the past two years. The next section of the report gets past STAR. It continues to use and report on all of those student groups, but instead of reporting on our state assessment, it reports things like attendance, dropout, graduation, college-ready courses that we're taking, or assessments. And just to focus on a few of those that are more prominent in the news right now, our attendance rate is, or was, in 1415, 95.3, which is pretty consistent with the year before that. Our annual dropout rate went from 1.4 to 1.5. That point-one difference, I think we can attribute to the fact that our class of 2015 had to graduate on the STAR EOCs, and the class prior to that, and all classes prior to that, were on tax. So a point-one difference really isn't much to worry about there. Our graduation rates, even with that in mind, remain steady, 89.4, and above the state's reported graduation rate on that report. So we will continue to celebrate that. This next item is our college-going students. So this is our percent of students enrolled in college the fall after high school. This report is actually not produced by TEA. We subscribe to a reporting system that gives us results for any college or university across the entire nation. The state report just focuses on state, so we thought it'd be a little more fun and exciting to see what we do for the entire nation. And we have averaged 54% of our kids enrolling in college the fall immediately after some wait a year or two, and we have other reports for that, but right now, we're averaging 54% there. The next pieces of this report, for pages 15 through 20, include our breakdowns of race and ethnicity. Right now, our Hispanic population is 83%, African-American, seven, white, six, Asian, three, and the others, one percent. As I mentioned before, our economically disadvantaged percent is 76.4 compared to this state's 59, 30% English language learners, and almost 60% at-risk. Also here, we've highlighted some information you can find in the report about our bilingual ESL programs, Career in Tech, Gifted and Talented, and Special Ed. On a Special Ed note, you've seen a lot in the news about that recently, about the state having unreasonable expectations and all that. I just want to assure you that we continue to do what's best for kids. We are above what the state target is, which is one of the issues the feds have with the state, but I am positive that we are doing what's best for kids, regardless of what an arbitrary value has been set out there. The next piece we have here is teachers by years of experience. There's a whole lot of staff information in the TAPR. This just focuses on one of them. Our largest percent is 34.2 for teachers with one to five years' experience. Those with over 20 and beginning teachers are about the same, at 10 and 8%. That's all the exciting news out of the TAPR I have for you. The actual annual report will be online within the next two weeks. It is a very long PDF document that includes the full TAPR report, not only for the district, but for every campus, all the campus objectives from the plans that you've already approved, as well as the rest of the items listed here. So two weeks, online, full report. That's it. Thank you. I can't get any faster, so.
You did good.
The next item is public comments, and we had no one sign up for that. So moving on to the third item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Hearing none, the motion is passed. The next item is our personnel section. Consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through D of the personnel section.
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Hearing none, the motion is passed. Ms. Morgan, would you please read those names?
It's my honor. Melissa Loza. Is Melissa here? Melissa? Melissa has been named counselor at Shaw Middle School. Do you have family with you?
I do. I have my husband, my parents, and extended family as well.
Awesome. Next is Brittany Thorn Allen. Is Brittany here? Hi, Brittany. Brittany has been named LSSP for the remainder of the school year. We congratulate you in your new position.[1513.75][1513.75](Applause). And we welcome you to Pasadena.
Oh, thank you.
Do you have family with you?
I do. My husband.
Make him stand up.[1526.11][1526.11](Laughter).[1527.11][1527.11](Applause).
Now, I think several of you are here for the next couple, and that is first naming the Assistant Director of Athletics, Donna Branch. Donna?[1544.14][1544.14](Applause). Do you have family and friends with you? Family and friends?
I have Dobby, family scattered in here. I may just maybe sit with me. And I see some PISD coaches, too, so it's real exciting.
Very good. And last but not least, we have a new athletic director, and would Rupert Hasso please Welcome to the district. You have family with you?
Yes, ma'am. I have my wife and my daughters here with me.
Make him stand up. There you go.[1594.01][1594.01](Applause).
We welcome you to Pasadena and are excited about all that you bring to our district.
I thank you and I thank you for calling. And Miss Sullivan, we press the board members to afford the work of everybody here, and especially the people behind you.[1612.41][1612.41](Laughter). Thank you for welcoming me to your family.
Welcome. At the same time, I would like to recognize three who are retiring, have announced retirements. Johnny Parker, Career in Tech High School, who teaches auto tech. He's been in education for 31 years, 26 with PISD. Jean Coker, McMaster's Elementary, special ed life skills, 13 years, all with PISD. And Amelia Ramos, McMaster's Elementary, bilingual first grade, 34 years, 12 with PISD. We wish these individuals well in their retirement as they begin a new phase in their lives. Thank you very much.[1665.75][1665.75](Applause).
In your agenda, page 103 is certified personnel, and that's for information only. We move right along for the educational section. Consideration and possible approval to the Pasadena ISD Extended Year Programs for the summer of 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Hearing none, the motion passes. The next item, consideration and possible approval to the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the Charles A. Dana Center at the University of Texas at Austin, concerning regional implementation efforts related to the college preparatory mathematics course.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. And is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Hearing none, the motion is passed. The next item, consideration and possible approval of the 2017-18 Pasadena ISD instructional calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. Diane, where are we on our School of Innovation?
We have posted it on our website for the required 30 days, so we're probably, I would say, 20 days away from the final feedback on that. We've presented it originally to DEC, but it'll go back once we get all the feedback from the community and those out from the community and those out there that want to provide feedback, and then, of course, eventually get back here to the board.
Okay. Do you anticipate it changing the calendar in any way?
I believe, Rhonda, do you want to answer that? Would the District of Innovation Plan change anything we have currently in our calendar? I don't believe so.
The only thing is if the District of Innovation Plan is not approved, we would have to change the.
The start date.
Okay.
But other than that, it would be just staying further into June.
Okay.
Any more questions or discussion?
Thank you for all the comparison of districts, too. Appreciate that.
And I just want to thank Rhonda. She worked very hard on this. She's pointing at her team, but this was a group effort by the ASCDs, but I'll tell you, as a person that did calendar, that's one of the harder jobs to do and make everybody happy, so they put a lot of time in this.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Palmer.
And your team.
And your team, yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item number four, consideration and possible approval for Bondi Intermediate, Southmore Intermediate, and Parkview Intermediate to participate in the pilot program of TXOC through their career explorations and exploring career courses.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Karen wants to elaborate, but it's a required part of our curriculum as far as the career and exploration, so we're excited to have access to this.
Good.
All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval of sole source purchase from College Board for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passed. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of the Houston CPA Society Grant Award.
I so move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval for the eight Pasadena ISD CTE students to participate in Louisiana Youth Seminar sponsored by Shell Oil from July the sixteenth through the twenty-first, 2017.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Is this something that is new? Is something we've done before?
Sarah, you want to come up? We tried to go last year. Y'all approved the trip, but unfortunately, there were some situations in Louisiana that caused us to turn around and bring the kids back.
Yeah. Shell has sponsored this for us for the past, this will be the third year. This will allow us to transport the kids, and Dr. Powell's right, we got to, almost to Baton Rouge, and my phone started blowing up, so we turned around and came back. So, hopefully this year, they can make it for the week.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is passed. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval for a trip taken by J. Frank Doby High School debate and team members on January the twenty-seventh through January the thirtieth, 2017, to the 2017 Barclay Forum in Atlanta, Georgia, at Emory University.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? My question is, how did they do?
They did quite well at Harvard that you're about to hear about. I don't know if Mr. Moses is in here or not. Do we know the results? I can only speak for one of them. That might be my daughter.
So. I think Troy went to.
Well, at Harvard, there were two hundred and forty-five kids, and she called mama, and she said, "I'm down to fifty-one," and then she called mom again, and she's a sophomore. She was down to twenty-four, so she finished in the top twenty-four in her event, but some very talented kiddos there. Mr. Moses, do you know anything about Emory results? I know they had.
He's texting me now.
Okay. They have a duo that did really well at Harvard. I know they have a dramatic interpretation, and I'm sure they'll come and show off their medals and trophies and maybe entertain us once again like they did last year, so.
Do they have some of the same kids on that team?
We do. We have the young lady that did the Ava Gardner. She is a senior, Rebecca, so she'll.
We had a student make the finals at Emory, one makes the semifinals, and two groups make it to the quarterfinals.
Wonderful.
Very well. Thanks, Dr. Powell, shared with you their Harvard results here from this past week. Very proud of them, they did very well.
That's great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's passed. The next item, consideration and possible approval for a trip taken by the J. Frank Doby High School speech team members on February the seventeenth through the twenty-first, 2017, to the National Harvard Forensic League Competition in Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number ten, consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Doby High School Speech Debate Qualifying Team, members to travel to three national championship events, NIE TOC, which is National Individual Events Tournament of Champions, TOC, which is Tournament of Champions, and NSDA, which is National Speech and Debate Association Championships.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Just a reminder, Doby was second in the nation last year, so these students are.
Oh, wow.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moses, but that's the reason for why they're being invited to compete at various levels and then able to work their way up to the national level by qualifying.
That's wonderful. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Hearing none. The motion carries. The next item, item number six, is student achievements on pages one twenty-seven through one thirty-two. And those of you in this room are aware that our students have great achievements every day that they go to school, and many of our students have those achievements outside of the school day, which they work very hard for and spend a lot of their time working for. So, we're very proud of all of the students within our district for their student achievements that they have earned and worked for. The next item is policy update and review. Consideration and possible adoption of TASB Localized Policy Updates 105 and 106 affecting local policies.
I move we adopt TASB Update 105 and Update 106.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiana, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number two under that section, consideration and possible adoption of local district update 2017.01 affecting CPC local.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. And we move to our financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is passed. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of independent auditor for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs., Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of a resolution to declare district property as surplus property for the purpose of soliciting bids for sale.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion?
I have a question after we vote on this. I was just telling you upfront. Where is it?
Well, you wanted to ask the question.
Well, I can ask you. Is this some of the, is this surplus? Is this some of the back tax property?
This is the property that I had, we had brought this to you in 2013. We're just bringing it to you again. It's on Spencer and Tulip, and it's a property that is not far from Kendrick Middle School.
Okay. Just our wishing of it.
Just, right. Correct.
Are we still being pretty aggressive with the property that has gone delinquent as far as selling or?
I think probably Mr. Joyner could speak to that. I know there was a recent advertisement.
We have our website set up, and it had it set up now for more than several months, and we've got it, got it up. It has a picture of all the properties. It has all of the information on the properties. It has the amount of taxes that were owed on it, and what we do is, they, they find the website, and they will contact our office, and then we refer them to the tax office, and Mrs. Henry has them send in letters of interest, and so it is working, working quite well, I think. And so, we have almost fifty properties on the website, and so it's working, working well.
When it, when it gets to Mrs. Henry, can she say yes, sell, or not sell, or? So, the final decision of sale is the tax collector?
John, do you want to answer that? The final decision of sale, where does that lie?
Yes, we evaluate the property to see if it really is available to be sold, or is it just going to be advertised, and there aren't any purchasers for it, so we try to look at that every time we put a property up for sale. We always want a buyer or a viable piece of property.
The only thing is, if that property's sitting around, if we can sell it, we need the money more than we need the property right now, especially, especially if it's a lot or something in the middle of the subdivision that we're not going to do anything with. I'd rather, I'd like to see that stuff sold and, and get back on the tax rolls and get the money for the kiddos. That's all.
I have a question. The properties that are listed in the South Belt Leader, are those producing prospects?
Those, those properties were, we run those ads in both the South Belt Leader and the Citizen, both of them. And we run them at different times, weekly, but to get better coverage instead of just writing them in one paper for one time.
Yeah.
We run them in both papers, twice. And, and those properties in there are basically from the same list that's on the website. And so, we're trying to generate interest from, from papers as well as the website also. These are properties that we have run through initially sometime in the back, the, the regular tax foreclosure sale that the state property tax code has set up. And, and those properties are sold, what we can sell those properties, or they were sold the first Tuesday of each month. There are tax foreclosure's down at the courthouse door. And what that is, that is a, a public sale. It is really heavily attended here in Harris County. People bring cash money or cashier's check down there, and, and they bid on these properties. What, what tax and jurisdictions have and run into is that when we have the tax foreclosure sale, the first one, there is a mandatory amount of money that must be bid for that property, and it's either the amount of the taxes owed or the judgment amount, or it is called, or it is called the adjudged value, which is the value that the Harris County President District has placed on the property for tax purposes. Those, those buyers, at those sales, usually are, are pretty sophisticated. They are real estate dealers, real estate brokers, and investors, and they, they go over it. Sometimes you have properties that will not generate a bid equal to the mandatory bid set by law. And then, what occurs is, is the selling agent is usually a Harris County constable, or in some cases, a deputy sheriff, and then that selling officer does not get a bid high enough to, to comply with the law. Then it is struck off to the district that is selling it. Now, when we say struck off, like, like when we have one and there's not a sufficient bid for it, that doesn't mean that Pasadena Independent School District owns that property totally by itself, because other tax and jurisdictions have intervened in our suit, City of Houston, City of Pasadena, other MUD districts or whatever, Saint Simeon College and others. Then, when, when it is struck off to us, it is struck off to Pasadena Independent School District for itself and as trustee for the college, MUD, MUD districts, Harris County or others. So, when you, when you see these, these properties advertised, we don't have sole control and ownership over those, those properties. They're not totally our properties, because some other tax and jurisdictions, some city, what a district, whatever, has an interest, too, if they were in the suit that generated the sale. So, when we're doing the website and whatever, we're in effect advertising for Pasadena ISD because we are the, are the trustee on those. That is, we filed the suit, got the judgment, took the judgment, ran it through the first sale, but we're also advertising for any other entity that owns a share in that. And so, the, the sales usually, there, there's a great, great deal of interest in, in some of the properties. These investors, most of the investors that go, go down on the first Tuesdays are very sophisticated investors. Not all of them are, but many of them are. And so, they, they like to cherry pick the properties. And sometimes what they do is, they will not bid on it at the original sale, at the first sale. They'll, they'll wait until the struck off properties are sold, because then the, when they're being sold off, the struck off properties, they can be purchased much cheaper. They don't have a mandatory bid the second time around.
But that, that decision, they come, they'll make a bid, and they turn that bid into?
Mrs. and Mrs. Henry.
Mrs., they turn that into Mrs. Henry, and Mrs. Henry decides on whether it sells or not. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that right?
Any other questions or discussions?
Well, we had a couple of interest in the Spencer property.
We've had two recently.
And then that comes to us?
It will come to you. They will take bids, and then they will come to you for the Spencer property, correct?
This is not one of those properties that he's talking about.
All right.
But it will come on our agenda if they sell some tax property. We will pass on that.
On the property, on the struck off property, if you notice every now and then coming through, will be a resolution where the board is resolving to sell those properties. Those are properties that had previously been through the original foreclosure, and it did not meet the minimum required bid, and then it was struck off to us, and so then the board has the authority to reset it for a resale.
I call the question.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is passed. Now to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval for the sale of 230-foot-wide right-of-way pipeline easements to Enterprise Houston Ship Channel LP located at the southwest corner of the North Broadway and South Shaver Site and the west end of the Pearl Hall Elementary School site.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the transfer of 2014 Bond Program Unused Project Funds to the 2014 Bond Contingency Pool.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the construction contract for the new May Smith Elementary School Replacement Project and the funding of the 2014 Bond Contingency Pool.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is passed.
We do have representatives here from Drumala. Mr. Pitchford couldn't make it tonight, but Jason, I hope I say this right, Layby and Ellen Layby are here as representatives of that company.
Very good.
Have you been working with Pasadena ISD?
Another project.
You've always done a great job.
We've done a good job.
It's always been a pleasure to have Drumala within the district.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Item number four, consideration and possible approval for the HVAC Testing and Air Balancing TAB Services Agreement for the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technology High School Edition Project.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of the HVAC Testing and Air Balancing TAB Services Agreement for the new May Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is passed. Consideration and possible approval of the Budget and Design Services Agreement for the renovation to Science Classrooms at South Houston Intermediate School Project.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Construction update. You have your handout. Is there any discussions or questions? Everything's good?
Yep.
Great. Under the miscellaneous section, we have no communications, and we had no public comments for today. So item number three, consideration and possible approval of the Revised Election Order Attachment A for the Pasadena Independent School District Trustee Election to be held on Saturday, May the 6th, 2017.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Kiana and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number four is to set the next regular board meeting a suggested date of Tuesday, March the 28th, 2017.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's passed. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March the 28th, at 5:30 p.m. Nothing more to come before this board. I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:10.